We have a couple of council members that are unable to make it tonight. Councilmember Stevens and Councilmember Kellogg will not be able to make it. I see Councilmember Stevens has provided some comments. I assume Councilmember Holman will be here in a bit, so we'll go ahead and get started. We have three items this evening, beginning with city goals and objectives.
Thank you, sir. This is the first quarterly report on the new council goals that were established in July of 2013. Following that date, the council did have a retreat. My intention tonight, if it meets with council approval, is we kind of thought usually when we start the goals report, you all have had the chance to look through the initial report that we sent to you, and if you would want us to field any questions or have any comments on what we provided, and then one of the other items that I'd like to get to as far as a format for the quarterly goals report during the work session is to highlight or cameo a couple of the items that we feel might be of special interest to the council and bring those forward to you and give a little bit more extensive presentation on that, on those. Tonight, I had actually picked the lifecycle housing goal that you all have, as well as entrance signage for the city. Both of those fall under Mr. Catterett's purview. He is, as we speak, rocketing towards the city of Raymore.[93.36][93.36](Laughter). Rocketing. He had a college visit for one of his children today in Kirksville, which ended at four, so we're all keeping our eyes out for him and not letting any of the police know. But as of a little bit ago, he was leading Lee Summit and headed this way to make his cameo reports. If he's not here and we get to that point after you all's general comments or concerns, then I can certainly handle at least one of mine out to the best of my ability, and by then, he should be here. With that said, if the council would have any input for staff or any comments relative to the goals, of course, we've gone from the initial goals report that we had for several years where there were, I believe, 62 points of reference to well over 147 action steps associated with these. We feel like we've made some pretty good progress on some of them. Some of them are going to be timing issues that we have to get through budget before we can actually kick them off. With that said, staff would welcome any comments that the city council may have on these goals.
Comments from the council? Councilmember Morehead?
I'm drawing your attention to F, Communications subsection 4A.
Page?
Twenty-two. I know we had introduced the concept of the Raymore Arts Council, and there, you know, I know we had, I think we even had a work session project or a topic on this about four or five months ago. One of the things that I remember we discussed was involving economic development, as well as either to have that housed in economic development or have them play a role with parks. And in looking on here, of course, this is assigned to Parks and Racks, and this is no criticism of Park and Rack, but the thought was, has there been any further discussion, at least with those departments? What's the status on that?
That one was actually assigned to Parks and Recreation by Mr. Berlin. There were, as you may or may not know, at the state level, the Arts Commission is assigned at that level to the Department of Economic Development, tourism issues, et cetera. At many local levels, we find it housed in the Parks and Recreation Department. It had been Mr. Berlin's consideration at the time that he was putting together that particular component of the goals, that we would come back to the city council with firming up exactly how you all wanted to, we're going to provide you research, and I actually have that for an upcoming city council work session. We are going to provide you with the research that the Economic Development Department had done as far as where those are housed at the local level, not the state level, by most cities, what the commissions are made up of, which is all over the board, as far as how these are, these are, these commissions are built. There are some of these commissions in medium-sized cities where there's 40-some volunteers who serve on them with various roles. Also, some options for how you may want to see this particular commission funded. But we did intend to bring that back to you all with recommendations on some of those options and to make a determination on where we were going to house that departmentally as far as our liaison department to the commission would be concerned and what their role would actually be at a future work session coming up in the next couple of months.
Okay. Brief follow-up. You mentioned funding. With the budget proposal coming before us next month, has there been any reference or any at least tentative amount put in next year's budget to go toward the Arts Council, at least as a proposal?
There's nothing formally placed into the budget. I will tell you that during, not to spoil any surprises, but at the end of the budget, of course, the city council does have the ability to fund up specific projects that it wants to see. There is, I am leaving an amount in available fund in surplus over deficit amounts, revenues over expenditures this year. For those of you who are familiar with the budget, you may remember that Mr. Berlin, when he bought the budget, preferred to have a zero-dollar amount of, for that particular year, dollar revenue over expenses. It was always zeroed out, meaning he found an expense to go with each of the projected revenues. I've left a very modest amount in there for council discretion to actually bring us down to zero in the final budget. It's not much, but it might be enough to get a group like that started. And I was going to give you some considerations that you all may have. And then, of course, once again, I believe that we're going to be realizing, you'll be seeing it in a couple of weeks now, a fairly healthy available fund balance.
Other comments, questions from the council? Seeing none, all. Where did the mic drop off when I started, "Welcome to the ..."
Grab the paper.
Okay.[459.53][459.53](Laughter). All right. The Raymore Peculiar Community Alliance has got a, something like a youth center that they've set up. I've got a flyer here for that. This is not to say that Raymore shouldn't do something. This isn't peculiar. It's part of the Raymore Peculiar Group. But this is to identify that there are more people than just the council to recognize that someplace for teens to go is a good thing. The only other question that I had, and this will be coming up as a future work session topic, this is on page 13, item E, Annex 58 Highway to Raymore Peculiar East Middle School. My question is, can we still do that? I thought there was some sort of ruling change that said you can't just annex the roads.
I believe that there was a proposed ruling change that said you could not just annex roads. I believe if we, if it was the council's determination to annex out to that school, it could be done.
Okay, thank you. That was my only question. Other, Councilmember Holman?
I apologize for being late. I'm assuming we're in open discussion under goals and objectives. Is that a correct assumption? One thing I'd like, maybe Chief Zimmerman would be willing to address, if we had, I know she has thought about this before, but if we have given some serious consideration to establishing a position as a, of a traffic officer here in Raymore. It's, a lot of cities our size and even cities smaller have a traffic officer. Sometimes they have two or three. It's, it's been, I know identified in the community survey as traffic in general or improvement of the traffic scenario as being an important aspect of quality of life issues. Nobody likes to get a ticket, but they also like to complain about speeders and people who don't stop at stop signs as well. Having someone like that and someone who was, would have attended all the requisite accident investigation schools, I think, would be somewhat of a benefit to our city and something to certainly consider maybe in the future.
Was there a specific goal that's associated with your recommendation?
No, it's not listed in here. I would come under the, I think, page 27G, one, maintaining the feeling of community safety.
Okay. And the only reason why I ask is I don't want to open this back up to installing more goals. You know, we went through that process and we've established these goals. Now, if it can be tied into one, that'd be fine.
Well, given that, to me, it looks like this document's somewhat redundant. Some of these goals are listed numerous times, the same goals listed over and over. Some of these we addressed and we achieved a number of years ago. So if you're looking for validation of this, I think it's time to redo it, in my opinion.
Mr. Mayor, if I can ask a follow-up question?
Go ahead, and then...
Councilmember Holman?
Sir?
Could you give a little better explanation? Because, of course, respectfully, I've probably been pulled over by every single officer here for traffic in my lifetime, so, I mean, could you give an idea? Because you mentioned accident reconstruction, so I know there's more than just speeders. So, I mean, could you help explain?
I will, and I'll apologize to Chief Zimmerman in advance because she could explain this as well and probably a lot better than I could. But you have a number of, any number of Midwestern cities our size will have, obviously, a police force ran by their government, and that police force will generally have a certain number of specialists. You'll have patrol officers, obviously, you'll have supervisors like we do, you'll have detectives. A lot of times, they may have special assignment detectives, such as juvenile officer or narcotics officer. And a lot of these departments will have within their patrol division one or more persons assigned simply to traffic duty. Their eight or 10 or 12-hour shift would consist of watching for traffic violations and issuing violations or, you know, issuing citations to those violators as noted or issuing warnings. They typically work off of a lot of data, areas where we have a lot of collisions. They would generally be the first person, when available, to actually work or investigate a collision or accident scene. They're generally more trained and schooled. They generally go to the specialty schools, such as you mentioned, accident reconstruction. Gosh, there's just a number of those kinds of things that they can go to. They're also generally your kind of in-house expert, if you will, that the chief would go to on matters of specialty traffic enforcement, such as DWI or, Chief, what's the one with the, is it, DRA, Drug Recognition Expert? There's just a multivariety of things that, that traffic officers do, and it's unfortunate. Nobody likes to get a ticket, but that's probably one position within the police department probably comes closest to paying for itself, because that individual's out there, you know, citing people for violations of the law. People don't like to get the tickets, but they also don't like to see people driving 70 miles an hour on 58 Highway. So it's just something for consideration. I was a little surprised that we didn't have one when I moved to the city. Of course, we were a lot smaller then. I think Belton has three. And we have had off and on, I think we've had part-time traffic, haven't we, Chief? When we had the motorcycle, I don't know if we still have that. You know, okay. And, you know, so there's just a number of things, if that helps out.
Councilmember Wesco?
I have an item on page 19. It falls under Recreation, under subitem, provide more, subitem three, provide more activities for adults. And then, item C, develop special events, such as hot air balloon event, art fair, summer concert series. I've actually been approached by several citizens that are amateur electric plane enthusiasts or hobbyists. They would actually like to see some type of event where we would actually allow them to operate either remote-controlled airplanes, whether that be gas. And I realize that would require us removing the restriction that we have on those, those items for a special event. But I've been approached by several people who would like to see that, and they seem to believe there's a decent following here locally.
I will ask Mr. Kennedy to do some follow-up and get back with the council on. I have, one of these items, as you said, is on coming up with some various types of special events, brainstorming for that. I know that he is also under the direction of the park board to do this same item. And maybe Mr. Crass can get some input into that, because I believe he is a huge model plane enthusiast.
All right, well, I guess we'll go on to the next item, and then when Jim shows up.
Are you?
I'm sorry?
I had some questions about housing.
Okay, and that's, that's what I was asking, is, does anybody have any questions? You do? You have the floor.
All right, then. I am concerned about some of the housing to make sure that we have enough diversity in it. I know that we've got some coming in on the assisted living and memory care, but the cost that they're talking about, three to $4,000 a month, I'm going to put that without, out of the reach of a lot of people here. I'm wondering how we're doing on our idea with granny flats. Because what I understood that we had done, we had asked the planning and zoning to come up with some sort of an idea, and they had made arrangements for it, or they had recommended that we do it in five-acre tracts and more, put the extra little house. If you live on five acres, you've got a big house, and you, there's a possibility of at least 10 more houses on that acre. And to put a little tiny shed-type thing on there really doesn't benefit for the people that have that kind of acreage who own the rest of the town. And I was wondering if we should take a look and see what we could do in the parts of town where we've got like cul-de-sacs that have got extra space, or where we've got, I know out there on the horizon, they've got a piece of property, they cannot build a house on it because it's not big enough for a house, but it might be big enough for a small cottage next, if it was attached to one of the two houses on either side of it. And I was wondering what we were doing for that and how we can, what I call multiple generational living, and what we were doing on that more than just figuring out something for five acres. Because out in my area, I wouldn't, five acres, in order to pay for itself, would need to have about 10 houses.
Didn't this come before council not too long ago?
Yes, and Councilmember Hubach may be talking about something slightly different. I remember that during that conversation, accessory buildings being built as granny flats was the term that, that was picked up and used during that conversation. Those did pass. I don't know if Councilmember Hubach is talking about something different from building on the existing lots, or, it sounds like she's mentioned a couple of unbuilt-out lots, which would be probably more developer-driven, but...
Councilmember Morehead?
Well, and I was going to piggyback on that. Two years ago, when Mr. Catterett and I went to the American Planning Association National Conference, there were a number of sessions I attended that talked about different options in housing like this. I would actually encourage that maybe not in the immediate future, but give Mr. Catterett some time, and he could come back with a presentation for us to show us that with the formats and the places that have the ability to add, like you're talking, these additional housing units, examples that Mr. Catterett has seen nationally and how people can use their property. So that might be something informative that he could do to answer that question.
Well, I was wondering if we needed to start with, you know, planning and zoning commissions, ask them to take a look at it, there was something that should originate from the council, I mean, I wasn't sure, but if you ever going to do it, should we get started and just putting it off and putting it off, definitely get it started. I'd like to see some ideas and some concepts, what we think would be good for us, because one of the things that they did mention has been the amount of traffic that might be generated on that, and people would not want extra traffic in their neighborhood. Well, that wouldn't necessarily be a problem for the folks who either don't drive or just have one car. And so I was concerned that we didn't, probably didn't get started on that right away and start seeing what we do, because like I said, they're coming in with assisted living, that's one option, and then coming up with memory care, that's another option, and there's all these other things, but there's really no options for multiple generations that I had seen that were there, and that's what I was hoping maybe they'd get started on. Because we need that, there's a lot of people out there that want their parents or their children to be close to us, for whatever reason, financial reasons, they can't afford to live elsewhere, but they know that if they live near their folks, they'll be taken care of. And so, to me, that was probably important, and that was what I was looking for under housing, to see if they were doing anything, but to me, that's a very important thing. And there's the aging concept, the different materials that I get having to do with aging, always mention multi-generational use and the little accessory building, as we call them, but they call them a smaller home. And so that was what I am, I'm like, want to see some more activity on that area.
Mr. Bierbo?
Thank you, sir. And when Mr. Catterett does walk through the door, he's actually going to be talking to you about, he's been taking the classes down at Mark on multi-generational housing, and there he is now. And it's, the titling of it is actually making your community work for all ages, and he's going to give us an overview on, I think, give you some good information on exactly what he's talking, what we're talking about here.
Mr. Wesco, and then Mr. Holman?
Well, I'd also like to comment that I think what you're suggesting, we actually, we approved on those larger acre lots, but it's driven by the people who own the lots. You know, if I myself were to live on one, I mean, at the current point in time, I have no, no need to actually build one of those for my parents, because they're, they're not at that stage. So, you know, as the city, we passed the legislation to be able to make that happen, but until, you know, one of those individuals actually decide to act upon it, that's really the landowner's prerogative of whether or not they're going to move forward and actually do it. I mean, we've, we've opened the door to allow it, but if the people who actually own the lots that qualify, if they don't want to, then there's absolutely, you know, nothing that the city can do, because it's, it's really a landowner discretion.
But it seemed to me, Mr. Mayor, that we were putting restrictions on things by saying that we would recommend it for five acres, but we weren't talking about in the other subdivisions that we have here in the area. And I was kind of wanting to see some activity, maybe if they knew it was available, maybe they might be looking into it.
Councilmember Holman, then Boehner, then Morehead, then Wesco. So you all have to keep that straight, because I'm only saying that once.
In my short time on the planning and zoning session, we, we saw a case like this, at least one. I remember one in particular, they wanted, and I don't know if they built it, Jim, you can maybe refresh my memory, was it a separate unit or they built onto the house and wanted some setback ease, they wanted a little bit of release on that. And we granted some exceptions because of the particular use of the adding on to the structure or the new structure, if I'm, am I thinking correctly? The thing that I, I would like to ask Ms. Hubach, and I think this is going to kind of tie in Mr. Wesco's comments as well, we can only offer, it's certainly up to the landowner, whether or not they want to build or build a separate structure, build on their house. One thing I think we might be able to do to kind of bridge that gap is perhaps advertise a little more. You know, most people, if you think about my scenario, my mother is, she'll be 71, and she's in good health, she's living on her own, but there probably will come a time that we'll have to consider a scenario, whether, you know, will she be able to live on her own anymore, and do we want her to age in place with the family? If so, what are my options? You know, and a lot of people, I probably don't consider that, but we could do some maybe simple things. Maybe we, maybe we already have brochures. If not, we could, we could have brochures available for people to, you know, here's what the city can offer in that terms of that, you know, you can expect to add on X number of dollars. It's not a guarantee, but per square foot, so your cost, this kind of thing. And maybe on the, the closed-circuit TV channel, you know, we do the different slides that go through. You could have, you know, if you're considering adding on for an elderly family member, see Mr. Catterett, we'll put the boom on him, and he can kind of explain this more. He does explain things very well, and I think if we just kind of directed people there that, A, this is an option, B, we, you know, we do try and work with you as much as possible on this, and this is an option, as opposed to just, you know, taking mom to a rest home or whatever the other options are. Do you think that might be helpful?
Councilmember Boehner?
So, what I think I'm hearing is from Councilman Hubach, is that with, is perhaps looking at whether or not it would be feasible for us to include a greater variety of lot sizes in that, in that, in that allowance to have an accessory dwelling on it, whether that accessory dwelling is directly connected or not. I think what she's, she's trying to say is, we've got it pretty segregated, about three-acre, five-acre lots, and maybe we want to consider other sizes to be...
And I, of course, unfortunately, lost my page here. I thought the conversation was just to stay within, just a review of the goals and objectives, not to actually discuss the specifics.
I was trying to keep it there.
But, but respectfully, I, I still believe that the issue presented by Ms. Hubach is completely sound under objective A2, A2, creating housing for a life cycle. But again, for me, you know, going back to some of the things that Mr. Catterett and I saw in Los Angeles, and I know he sees regularly, I would like to see a presentation done by the director to show us some examples of communities that have done this, so we can see what variables... Holy smoke. I've had a judge do that to me once, after effect of, of the development. And so, you know, again, I go back to my, I think this would be a wonderful work session topic in the future, not to give Mr. Catterett additional homework, but I also point out that we have a subsequent objective and goal to have a meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I think this would be a wonderful topic, stated in here, that meeting set, I think this gives our first agenda topic to justify bringing both groups together, because I agree, anything that would, he would see, learn, and think of would first come administratively before P and Z, before it comes for us, so I think...
Councilmember Wesco?
Let me turn this off. You know, my concern, you know, I totally agree with, you know, as we're looking at a development, you know, if we, if we plan ahead to where these things are, you know, the possibilities are included, you know, I would support that. But trying to do it as an after-the-fact, you know, of subdivisions that have already been planned, trying to force in some, you know, a cottage onto, you know, a lot that wasn't designed for a house or, you know, that's too small, my fear is that it'll have a negative impact on the property values of people who have purchased around it. You know, when, when developers lay the lots out and lay the plan out, you know, people, when they purchase in there, you know, there's something that's aesthetically pleasing to them, you know, they, they like to feel the neighborhood, they, they move in those subdivisions for, for reasons. And if we start saying, well, okay, there's a third of a lot here that, you know, is just green space, but if we try to force a house on it, you know, how does that impact the property values of the people that are around them? You know, and so that's just my concern. There's, there's a lot of other factors that you have to take into account, because I know that, you know, there's one, there's one lot that's behind me that you could get a half a house there. But if they put a half a house there, I'd be upset, because it's just, you know, that's not the way it was designed. And what does that do to my property value? Because if they put a house, a half a house there, then they're going to pay taxes on it, which means it goes on the tax rolls, which means that when somebody goes to sell their home, they're going to pull comps in the area, so they're going to look at that house, and, you know, here's a, here's a, you know, a 1,700-square-foot house, 1,700-square-foot house, and a 800-square-foot house. That does impact what your house is worth in the market, and that's, and that's just a concern that we have to address.
And I don't, I don't think we're going to resolve this, this evening. I think Councilmember Morehead's suggestion of a work session on this is a good one. And I've noticed that we all have been handed out, "Making Your Community Work for All Ages," so I think I'll toss it on over to you.
Well, thank you. Yeah, we have handed out two publications that come from an initiative that, that staff's been involved with through the Mid-America Regional Council. It's the KC Communities for All Ages Initiative, and I just felt both of these handouts were appropriate to review. It goes directly to, you know, a work session topic. There's specifically a checklist that they've developed on, on items that a community can do internally to try to, try to promote aging or housing for all ages. And it talks a lot about, you know, aging in place, both within the home and also within the community. And when you start... And, and when you start looking at the checklist, Raymore has done quite a few items already. I, I feel we're in a very good position as a community in achieving some of these goals. And, you know, we, we're one of the few that allow the accessory dwelling units. Yes, it's only in a few districts now, but it was a start. It's, it's a start for us to expand upon where it's appropriate. You know, we have a great sidewalk, you know, program for connectivity throughout our entire community. We do have quite a number of zoning districts now that allow a variety of, of lot sizes. So we, we added some small lot districts with the intent of trying to provide small lots where small homes could go, a little bit more dense development, but that's what, you know, a lot of individuals are looking for. So it's just something, you know, another tool that we've, we've, we've made available. But when you start going through the checklist, you'll see how well Raymore really has already done. But there's a lot more to do, and these were just a couple of examples. And I, I do, I like the idea of, of doing the joint meeting with the planning commission and get their thoughts on this, and, and we can put together a presentation of what some other communities have done that are, you know, also doing a very good job, and we'll share that with everybody at a, at a joint meeting.
Thank you. Other comments and questions? I'll turn it back to you then.
Thank you, sir. The, the second item that we thought we would highlight, which would also address several of the, the items within the goals report, it's also been brought up for possible future work session topic, is entrance signage in the city to identify the city, unique entrance signage, et cetera. And so once again, I will turn it over to Mr. Catterett.
Thank you. The city entrance signs has been a topic for, for several years. It first came about in, in some depth, at least as I saw with the growth management plan, when that particular document was being, being drafted. One of the key planning areas, focus groups specifically set up a, an objective to establish the unique identity for Raymore, and also the access step of, of installing identification signs at our gateway entrances. And the, the focus group was specifically interested in the west entrance to, to Raymore at 58 Highway, as well as the new interchange. They kind of wanted to focus first on the entrance ways for, off of the interstate. And this particular goal was actually then incorporated into the council goals, as you know, again, to provide a strong identity and install identification signs. So this year, and staff was looking at drafting, preparing the capital improvement program for 2015 to 2019, we, we started having discussions on maybe doing a pilot project, putting, putting some funding into the CIP to, to develop a pilot project. And we were focusing on the North Cass interchanges, where we would, you know, install, install the sign, but that was certainly not set in stone. But it was decided because of the efforts that had been ongoing with the roundabout, you know, decorative committee, the feature committee, to, to not include it in this year's CIP, but to see what comes out of that particular project. Because at least at staff level, we believe there's, you know, there are elements within that particular feature that can be carried through to create a theme. So when you see this monumentation, you see these decorative features, they all carry the same message of that you're at Raymore. And we, we liked that aspect of it, we thought it's probably best to, you know, be able to gain a little bit more information. There, there's a lot of work being done by a lot of communities on this topic. The one closest to us, Grandview, has done some great things with their, with their signage. Specifically, they have, if you've gone down their main street, they have the arch going over the, over, over Main Street that says Grandview Main Street, and that particular design has been carried through other places in Grandview, other public places in Grandview. Other communities working on monumentation, identification signs, Peculiar has been working for one, working on a project through MoDOT for their entranceway. Lee Subbit is working on a public-private partnership. They've gathered quite a bit of private funding for their particular feature, but it does have a public funding element as well. And so what we're looking at is postponing, placing funding in the budget for, for the CIP for next year's budget, and again, trying to work off of the design of the, of the roundabout feature, perhaps incorporate that as we try to look for some monumentation signs throughout the community, so. Brief overview.
And as you can see from all of these, some of these are just absolutely gorgeous. I, one of the things that amazed me with the, with the Main Street and Grandview sign is, don't know if you noticed, but it's actually also there, it's a grouping of stop signs that are connected, or stoplights that are connected to that, but the sign itself is so eye-catching, you don't notice that there's a street light right in front, or a stoplight right in front of you, right in the middle of it. The, the signage, when you start getting into the column and steel, you're, you're talking about real money, a hundred thousand to 250,000 for a smaller one is not unusual. Grandview just now duplicated that particular sign that they have on Main Street in their new dog park that's down on Byers Road, just past the view down there, if you want to go down and take a look at that one. It, it was also very expensive, and it's a much smaller model. But we are working on trying to perhaps use the roundabout feature as the starting point that we would use for some identifier to go with these signs, and then make a decision, have the council make a decision on where they'd want them located throughout the city. That concludes staff report on the goals tonight, sir.
Councilmember Hubach.
One of the problems that I've been having about having signs welcoming people to Raymore is, the people or the cities around us know their boundaries, most of them can't annex anymore. Raymore can, we really don't know where our, our final boundary is, and we don't know whether it's right there on Prairie Lane, off of Hubach, or whether you're going to go down to 291. So before we do something like that, we need to determine what our boundaries are going to be, and, and make sure that we have them incorporated into our city.
Yeah, and, and as a follow-up with that, I would think that if we were to put signage out in an area where we might annex later on, that that signage would have to be, be able to be moved. You know, we're, we're not going to move a roundabout, but a pedestal sign can be moved. Other comments? Councilmember Dobloch.
Just to add to that, we have some boundaries that we know are very firm boundaries, so we have places where we can get started without trying to label the boundary on every street.
And I'm continuing to work on Belton so that they will allow us to annex in everything east of 49 into Raymore, but I am not having any progress there. Speaking of annexation, though, you'll notice that one of the items in there was annexation agreements with the surrounding communities. I have talked with the mayors of, well, Mayor Davis, Mayor Stark, Sharf, and they're all in agreement that, you know, this is something that should move forward, so I'll be working with them to get some agreements out there, so. Other questions of staff? I guess we're done with that item?
Thank you, sir.
And we'll move on to the next item.
Thank you again, sir. Second item on your agenda for this evening is the UDC requirement for sidewalks on undeveloped lots. On January 13th, 2014, the City Council approved Resolution 1403 that confirmed the effective date, which is now passed, it was August 1st, for the requirement to install sidewalks on lots where 66% or more of the lots on the same side of the street, in the same block already have sidewalk placed in front of them. The next step in the process, we'll call for the City Council to schedule public hearings for each of those lots that do not have sidewalk on them, and staff will be seeking direction this evening on how the City Council would like to proceed with the extremely extensive public hearing process that you're going to be looking at. And with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Catterett.
Thank you. A few other comments. After adoption of the Resolution 14 dash 03, staff did send notice to a total of 89 owners of lots that met the requirement for having sidewalk installed. With the deadline date established of August 1st, a total of 15 of those properties have either had sidewalk installed or in the process of installing sidewalk. So that leaves us a total of 74 undeveloped lots that's, that still have the required upon them to install the sidewalk. The code specifically requires that a public hearing be held, and the code also specifically identifies the factors with which council will utilize in deciding whether that particular individual lot, the subject of that hearing, should have a sidewalk installed by the city because it meets the, the factors that are necessary. And if we do install the sidewalk, then we place the special tax assessment on the property and collect that through the collection of property taxes. So we're faced with a total of 74, again, 74 undeveloped lots. A number of those are under common ownership, so there is some, there's a possibility that we could do grouping of the lots into, into public hearings. For example, the Shadowwood subdivision, all the undeveloped lots in that subdivision owned by one, one builder, one owner. Now, we would have to make a decision individually on the lots, because there may be a few lots within the subdivision where it may not be appropriate for us to, to install the sidewalk. But we can at least have the hearing all together, because the testimony is likely to be the same from the builder, the testimony is likely to be similar with, with the neighbors. What the intent would be for the hearings is I would send notice to the owner of the undeveloped lot, and then I'd send notice to the owner of any developed lot next to that, with the idea that those individuals, of course, are most impacted by no sidewalk in the undeveloped lot, but they could also talk to their neighbors and others that may have an interest within the, within the subdivision as far as having sidewalk installed. Staff would also do just a real brief report, one page, for each one of these sidewalks, and, and give a, what our recommendation would be, whether we should install the sidewalk or not. Of the 74 lots, I'm pretty familiar with all of them, there are a couple that, for example, are at the very end of a dead-end street, where really nobody would be entering that lot or that sidewalk segment to go any further. So there might be a few examples where staff could come up and say, really, until that road is extended further, it doesn't make sense for the city to install that segment. What we're looking at as far as timing is scheduling the public hearings before the end of September. After, after we hold the public hearings, that staff would know how many sidewalk segments that we're moving forward with, and go through their request for proposal process to get bids to install the sidewalk segments. We'd look to have that bid award sometime in November. We would establish a deadline for the contractor to install the sidewalk of July 1st, and at that point, we would send, once the sidewalk's installed, we would send an invoice to that lot owner to request payment by August 1st. And if they do not pay by August 1st, that leaves us the month of August to be able to prepare the necessary paperwork that has to go to the county for doing the special tax assessment. Now, if a property owner, you know, if we have the, we have the contract, and the sidewalk is required to be installed, if for some reason, before that sidewalk gets installed, that individual either installs a sidewalk themselves, or comes in and obtains a building permit to construct a home on that, then we take that sidewalk segment off the list. So it does, you know, there's, there's automatically built in an extension for these lot owners until that time, you know, if we make the decision, we're going to do it, we're going to install the sidewalk, and before that date, if the sidewalk's installed, they get that extension until that time to actually complete this. None of the property owners will be surprised by this requirement, this would be probably the fourth notice that would go out to the individuals. I don't think ownership has changed on any of the lots, so they have consistently been told. This started back in 2012, and we granted a two-year extension to 2014, so they've already had over two years, it's going to be three years total that they've had, where they've been aware that this requirement was coming. So I think we've been very fair with, at least advising the property owners that this was coming, so it should not be a surprise to anyone. What we'd like to do is maybe for council to give us some direction on how you want to do the hearings. We would anticipate if there's 74 hearings, by grouping them together, because of the common ownership, we're really talking 34 separate hearings. And so if we, you know, average five minutes for each hearing, it's about a three-hour public hearing process. What we'd like is direction, do we want to do it, try to do it during a regular council meeting, a council work session, take one of your work session meetings to do this, or even a special meeting on, on a night that council doesn't normally meet, but reserve it just for this particular topic. So that's really, at this point, the end of my comments, and again, the direction we want to seek is how you want to proceed with holding the hearings.
Before I open it up for council comments and questions, I have a quick question. Have any of the, the gaps been filled?
Yes.
Okay. So there are some people that are going, that, that own a parcel of land that needed to have a sidewalk there, and they have installed that sidewalk?
Yes, we've had four individuals simply go in and install the sidewalk segment, and then we've had 11 individuals actually obtain a permit to construct a home, so the sidewalk will go in as part of that process, so a total of 15.
Okay. All right, I'll open it up to council questions. Councilmember Wesco.
So have the lots that, that fall under this requirement, have we heard from those developers, or have they, have they expressed their intent to do it, or is it, we just had heard nothing from them?
We've heard from some. Again, we had the public hearings back, where we heard from several of the, several of the builders. We heard from the Shadowwood developer that wanted some relief, they felt that the sidewalk network that they had around the perimeter of their, of their subdivision met the requirement, and we indicated that it did not. The sidewalk that we're talking about is the public sidewalk on the, in front of the homes. So we heard from that individual, we've heard from Eagle Glaze developer, and I talked with a few other individuals that are certainly aware of it, they're simply, they were hoping the lots would sell, they wouldn't have to install the sidewalk. They sell the lot and get a whole built on it, and they avoid that extra cost.
Other questions? Councilmember Holman.
Mr. Catterett, I, I remember when we first brought this up at, at Planning and Zoning as well, and I remember the testimony of, of a couple of the builders, it wasn't as big a turnout as I expected, I think we had one or two that commented on it. I, I don't remember exactly if, if I own the lot, or someone owns the lot between two lots that are built out, and I've built my sidewalk there, and I sell the lot a year later to somebody that wants to build a home, when I go to construct the house, do I lose the entire sidewalk, or do I just lose a portion of that where I'm going to put the driveway?
You will certainly lose a portion of it because of the driveway approach. So once you decide where the driveway will go, that segment of sidewalk will likely come out because of the driveway approach as necessary. It's really dependent upon what care is taken with the remainder of the sidewalk during the construction process. There certainly are some things that a builder or a lot owner could do to protect the sidewalk during construction. If they leave it up protected, and, and, you know, different vendors and suppliers are able to go willy-nilly over it, you know, it probably will damage the sidewalk, but they certainly can protect, you know, 75% of the sidewalk from damage if that's what they choose to do.
And this is a, an expense that they would incur building anyhow, they've got to put the sidewalk in if they build the home. So we're talking about the slight, if they do it in the manner we spoke about, the, the additional cost is the, basically the portion of the driveway? Was that fair to say?
I think that's fair, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Morehead.
To the rest of the council, you know, one of the things I keyed on with the recommendation was the consideration of possibly doing this on a Saturday. I, I appreciate and respect staff's estimates, but I, I just know that, you know, if a builder comes and he takes his three minutes, and you even have one person plus a couple of us commenting, the estimate of around three hours, I think, is very generous, and we could run for a long time. Since we don't start our meetings until seven o'clock, I also fear that if you, you know, if you have a homeowner that says, hey, I might get on the docket at 9:30, they might be prone not to show up. And since, as pervasive as this is citywide, I would like us to keep this as open as possible. I think if we did a Saturday, that way if we extended an extra hour or so, it would be respectful to the citizens versus going to 11 o'clock at night or pushing this a second night. So I would just like to have that as an open-ended suggestion.
Councilmember Hubach, and then Wesco.
I looked at the undeveloped lots in, in Ward 4, and there were six subdivisions that were involved in it, and most of them just had two or three houses or lots, and the same developer, for instance, on Alexander Creek, there are three lots that would be involved, and there was just one person that owns all those. On Knoll Creek, there was four lots, and one person owned them. On Moon Valley, there were four lots with three different owners, and on Skyview East, there was one lot, and on Ward Place, there was two lots with one owner. The biggest one was Shadowwood, it had 18 lots that were all by the same owner. So I guess my question would be, when we would have a public hearing, since most of these are one owner, why would we take Alexander Creek, for instance, with three lots and one owner? Even he and she would be able to say why they didn't have all three of those done? There shouldn't be any reason why one would be any different from the other. There shouldn't be any reason why one would be any different from the other two. The only one that would take some time is Shadowwood. But what I came across on Shadowwood is that there are at least five different phases that have been, that they have added on. And in some of these, like on Phase Two, they still have eight that have not been built on. On Three, I think there is sixteen that have not been built on. No, fourteen, I'm sorry. And then on Phase Four, there are six. So they haven't built on each phase, they haven't completed each phase until they went on. So it would seem to me that even though there's eighteen, it shouldn't take very long to get by those because we're saying, this area here, you, two, why didn't you finish two before you went on to three or the four or whatever it is? So I wouldn't think that it would take, at least in Ward Four, it wouldn't take too long to do it. And then when I did on the other three and one and two, the only two that really had a lot, lots to discuss was Westbrook Villas, and that was in Creekmore. And I am assuming that, and then also they had quite a few in Southern Hill. So I'm assuming that there's buildings still going on in those areas, so that would make a difference there. But then in Ward One and Two, the only, the biggest one there was Eagle Glen with seven lots that needed to be developed. So I could see where we could rush this, not rush it, but we could get through with this by having each subdivision, the developer telling us which lots he was having trouble with and which ones he wanted to eliminate and to put the problem with. So I would like to have it as a special work session.
Thank you, sir. And staff did consider many of those issues, and we got ahold of Mr. Willer throughout drag to the table here, to kind of get the council's direction on what would be affording the citizens the greatest right without, and if I could push two against each other, you have a person who bought a lot several years ago, they do intend to build on it sometime in the future, they're the owner of the lot, it's the only lot that they have, it's a single lot listed on here, and they would normally, for a public hearing, come to the front, and the mayor would say, you have five minutes to make your case, and they would probably take as much of the five minutes as they could. Push that against an eighteen, one owner for eighteen lots in a single subdivision, what does it take to afford him his greatest due process rights to get up in front of the council? Is it getting up and making the exact same argument all eighteen times and using up the fifteen minutes? Or would the council want to have an extended period for someone like that because there may be a situation that they need to address that's unusual compared to the other seventeen lots that are in there? So they would have an extended period of time to talk? And Joe, are you going to help me out of this? Or are you just going to let me?
No, I think it'll cost me votes. You're going to hear, I think you, the staff has worked well, your policy decision is tonight, give staff direction that we're not putting on this on hold further. Proceed with the public hearing schedule we called for X time ago, and we've given them to delay. So that's your first, you could tell us all to stop and go back, which I think you're going to need a formal resolution to do that in your next meeting if that's where you're going. If you're not going there, I am comfortable with what was just outlined. I think that if there's a seventeen, as Ms. Hubach gave us here, and Shadowwater has seventeen lots, that he should be, A, hearing on his seventeen lots with maybe a ten or fifteen-minute max time limit for him, and then the individual lot owners would be a separate deal, and I think you're going to hear about their unbilled economics and so on. Mr. Crass estimated for me, he thought, a regular subdivision, a regular residential lot, and cost are looking at something around fifteen hundred dollars. Don't hold him to that. That was whispering to Joe on the deal. But I wanted to give you some grasp of the issue we got here for the individual who's coming up, because they're the ones, I'm sure, who are going to try to go to your heartstrings in your deal because they're not rich XYZ developer. So I do want to give them, the public, the due process of power, but on the other hand, A, I have strong feelings we shouldn't tie up one of your regular council meetings, whether you make it a special night or a work session. I'm very much with that, but I think this merits its own evening or two just on this subject, and we roll it in a very more formal, less wonderful ceremonial public things we have going along, and you guys having to grandstand to the public. This will be a very no-nonsense, we're about this one issue and lots, and thank you very much, we've no given on XYZ for whatever, now let's just talk about your lot with deals. Within that framework, I'm, I would want to hear if you don't, if you want to give them all five minutes per lot for all of them, that would be a uniform policy, but I see a distinction, and I don't think that's going to be necessary. I think we can move, as Ms. Hubach, this impresses me with the amount of homework she's done behind it. It sounds like several can be batched, and we can batch several subdivisions along, whether you want those all in the same night first, off the top, or do you want individual lot owners to be put first on the agenda with their five-minute apiece or whatever, or alphabetical, or geographical, or, you know, three wards one night? There is no rule in the charter or the deal that makes you do it. You tell us what you think about policy-wise. But I think I've tried to cover what Jim and I have discussed is, it's really time for us to move ahead, and let's try to do it in as painless a process for both you and them as possible. But it's almost closer to where, like when we had the liquor license hearings or the delinquent tax hearings, which have been over for you, it's not quite as fun and informal. Like, we're going to have to have a more regimented schedule. Mayor calling for the person to present, please present, ba-da-da-da, staff position, and then the applicants or the people, if anyone in the public wants to comment. I guess someone trying to get out of a large subdivision area saying, my seventeen lots shouldn't be done, and we may hear from people within that subdivision who want the connectivity or want the subdivision finished, and that will give you some balancing of equities to listen to in those, and that may be a more serious subject than each one of the individual lot owners, where I'm expecting you only to be hearing about every connectivity. Not able to build yet, and I'm rolling part of my fifteen dollars, but I'm going to put it in. Mr. Holman? The parameters of how you set it down are yourselves. Generally, I would think we'd have a formalized script where there's a presentation, I don't know, maybe briefly by you, Mr. Catterett, introducing the lots there, it's been undeveloped, it's existed X long, blah, blah, blah. You rest, the applicant can come forward and put on their X minutes, and then it's open to you as the trial fact to listen to them or ask any questions that are unique about that particular circumstance.
And I'll ask that everybody wait until you be recognized. It was Councilmember Westco's turn to go next, and then Councilmember Morehead. And then, did I see a finger go up and then Abdelgawad? And, you know, I can't see out of this eye, so you're going to have to wave.
You know, I actually kind of concur with Councilmember Morehead. And if I recall, just the initial meeting, when we had people come up and express their interest in making sure that this proceeded, and it wasn't even the developers, it was all the people who had an interest in making sure the sidewalks went in. That went on for a half an hour or an hour. So I actually totally concur that I think we should do it on a Saturday for the reason being it affords the citizen the greatest amount of time, and it also allows us to continue with our normal business on our normal council nights. Because if we are going to just have this on one night, this is going to be the only thing on that night. So, you know, what gets pushed for this, where, you know, I think this is a special meeting, you know, I'm willing to give up a Saturday to make sure that we get this thing moving. I think it should move forward as it's been outlined. I just think it should be a separate meeting.
Councilmember Morehead?
Well, and when we look at our work packet, when we did Resolution 1403, there were the seven tasks that we had outlined, and in Task Two, I'm looking at the work packet on page forty-eight of our packet, and we're talking about squeezing this in between August 25th and September 8th. And I would remind the council that we're right in the heart of our budget issue as well. So, you know, I would really rather see us preserve our regular session meetings and potentially work session meetings if an issue arose for that, and keep that, like, as Mr. Westco said, keep this to a Saturday, we have it isolated. But do we have a free Saturday in there from a calendar standpoint to be able to do it? I mean, because again, now we're also talking about scheduling, and are we going to be able to put in public notice? Because I know we're, it'd have to be done here starting pretty quick.
Thank you, sir. Jim, using a normal public notice, what would be the first Saturday that we could be looking at here? I think all of August is out, especially since we have an August budget meeting. We, Jim, in the case we could do it as early as September 6th, so you would have any of the Saturdays in September available to you? Okay?
Well, and if I may follow up on that, if I recall correctly, do we not have the MML Annual Conference on, I think it's the weekend of the fourteenth, that a number of us attend? Or that starts on Sunday, I apologize.
Yeah, I think you'd be okay on that.
So we'd be okay on that. And then, Mr. Catterett, are we risking, if we go too deep into Saturday, are we kind of shoving up against Task Three, and is that going to throw our schedule here out of sync?
As long as we have the public hearings by the end of September, we're, we'll stay on schedule.
Councilmember Abdelgawad?
I was going to suggest maybe doing two consecutive work sessions, like if we did our, the fifth Monday and then the following Monday, but then that would have the second public hearing the first week of October. The fifth Monday in Sep, yeah, the fifth Monday in September and then the first Monday in October. We could do half on each, but would that be too late for you if we did that first Monday in October? No, not, the last one in September and the first one in October. So we would do two consecutive Mondays, and they would be work sessions or?
The thing that I'm thinking about here is, we have two groups of people that are involved. You have individual owners of a lot, and then you have developers. The developers have multiple lots, and we want to give them the time that they deserve. You know, if you have eighteen lots, maybe six of them, you can say, here's why it shouldn't be built, and explain that, you know, it's the end of a street or something like that. The attractive thing to me on having a meeting on a Saturday is, is we could come in here eight o'clock in the morning, and the end time is elastic. You know, we can start with, I don't care who we start with or how we do it, but we start bringing people through, they have the time that they need to explain their position, you have the time that you need to consider their position, and then we can move forward. The idea of doing on two separate work sessions could work, but how do you divide up the lots? You know, if we just do it in one fell swoop, go straight through until we're done, then we're done. And on Saturday, you know, people are available on Saturday. Councilmember Hubach?
One of the things that I would suggest that we do is, since we've already made this our policy, all we're waiting to know is why they haven't followed through. So that means we don't have to hear from neighbors saying, yes, we want it, or no, we don't, because all we're talking to would be the developer or the owner of the lot, because we wanted to know why they're not performing. And if we had to divide it up, I would suggest anyone that had five lots or more and then anybody less than that, because five lots or more is usually a company of some kind, a developer. And that would be a way to break it up, unless the attorney thinks there's something else.
No, I think a compromise on that might be, Ms. Hubach, with Mr. Abdelgawad's ideas, have the five lots or more on the Monday night work session, reserving the following Saturday for the individual lot owners. Might be.
Had that many, most of them were individual lot owners.
Oh. Councilmember Holman?
I like Mr. Willer's idea. Also, I think in the interest, and I believe since it is a public hearing, we do have to take comment from anybody that would like to speak regardless of whether it's a property owner or not. If somebody wants to come up and go, hey, I walk a lot, I'm in favor of sidewalks, you should do this, we have to give them an opportunity to speak as well. I think that's a rule. What I would recommend is, single lot, five minutes. If you own two lots, ten minutes. Three or more, fifteen total. That should get plenty of people to make their case, given the amount of property that they own, and keep public comments for other than owners to three or less. Keep things moving.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question, following up with Mr. Holman, then? If I'm, if I have one lot that I haven't built a sidewalk on, then you're going to ask me how come? There's no point in asking my neighbors how come because they don't have to build the sidewalk. I don't know why we would have to have a public hearing that would have other people saying why I didn't build on my sidewalk. Now, to me, maybe there's something that you would know, but I think it should be limited to the people who have sidewalks, and we want to know why and when and what they're going to do on building.
Brief answer would be, a public hearing is that, Ms. Hubach. We don't have the right to tell the adjoining owners they can't speak. If they come and they want to part on it, they get their three minutes, because our code set out, there'll be a public hearing. Enamored about the Saturday.
I've got the mic, and I'm going to give it up.
Mr. Mayor, I encountered four or five that had more than five lots.
Okay. Councilmember Morehead?
The only comment I want to expand on this, and I'll keep it very brief, is that the reason why I go back to the Saturday is, my concern is, is doing it in the evenings like that and going late in the evenings, we have the issue of fatigue, and I also, to be sensitive to due process issues, I'd hate to see somebody stuck at the nine-fifty hour and then be told, hey, you can come back at the next meeting, there may be scheduling issues, and plus, there's just some frustration. The idea of banging it out on one Saturday gets us in, gets everything done under one roof, both literally and figuratively, and then we can get this done.
Other comp?
Give us some guidance on dates then, if that's your feeling.
I think one date that was proposed was September 6th, which was a Saturday. I've got some stuff going on that afternoon, but I can certainly attend. And I think Councilmember Abdelgawad was suggesting the fifth Monday in September, which is a lot later than September 6th. My mic's still staying on, this is amazing. Are there any other suggestions? September 6th, I think, is a good date. Does that cause horrendous grief for anybody? Okay? Propose another date.
I'm okay with the 13th or the 20th.
Joe's not good with the 20th. How about the 13th for everybody?
The 20th is foster festival in the park.
Oh, that's right, that's right. We won't want to do that.
I'm supportive of the 13th.
The 13th works for me. The 13th worked for everybody. September.
Thirteenth of September.
Good question, though, good question. All right, the 13th is September, and that gives us enough time to notify everybody and get wheels rolling. All righty, we have, if that was all for this, that item, okay, we have one item, other item this evening, and that's the request for qualification, executive search firm, city manager. And Acting City Manager, Fearborn, is going to turn this over to Joe, right?
The next step in the process will involve a series of meetings with the council and the firms that turned in their packets. Obviously, tonight, we are distributing the packets to you all. My suggested, and I put that very carefully, I'll just let the council know, I do intend to put my name in the hat for this. My suggested meeting scheduled to you all, which I would not gonna impose on you, and once I give this particular outline, that is why I asked Joe to be here tonight, so that he would actually be your administrative contact for the search process. Meeting two that you all would have would be to determine the shortlist of firms that are to be interviewed on the basis of rating points, and we provided you with a copy of the rating scale behind this, we also have copies on top of all of the packets, enough for each of you. Meeting three would be the council interviews, the shortlist firms, usually there's between one and three of those firms that you all would be interviewing during that third meeting. You would determine the first choice of firm for work, and then we would bring to you all the pricing envelope for that first choice firm. You don't see the pricing until that point, it is a quality-based selection process. And you would have the opportunity to review the pricing then immediately after you picked the firm, whether they were here or not. The fourth meeting, the council or their designee, if you so choose to have Joe go into that particular negotiation, would be to meet with the first choice firm to negotiate a final scope of services and pricing that would be associated with that. This is the point in the request for qualifications process where you actually drag them in, you say, don't drag them in, just ask them to come in, it's probably a bad way to put it. You ask them to come in, you sit them down, and you say, well, we like this about your scope of services, we don't like this about it, what would you not charge us if we didn't have you do X, Y, or Z, what would you charge us to add this particular item in? And then you come to a final pricing and a final scope, assuming that that's a successful negotiation, you would then need to have two readings or an emergency read to establish which firm you would want. If it's not a successful negotiation, you don't like the personality of a lead, you don't like the pricing that they have, just doesn't feel right to you all for any reason, you can choose to go into negotiations then with the second choice firm, and so on and so forth, down the line. At the sixth meeting for, for that, after the, the second reading then, you would actually meet with the firm and begin the process, have them outline for you how you were going to move forward.
Mr. Fearborn?
The reason, the, the reason I put meetings and not regular council meetings or work sessions, the only thing that you would necessarily be bound by is the fact that all of these were a public meeting that would need to be posted up, and the two readings to award the contract to a firm would both be at regular council meetings. So that would, or at one council meeting if it was an emergency read. Anything else, you could once again, schedule meetings during the week, you could schedule on the back end of the budget work session meeting, you could schedule on the back end of the sidewalk gap meetings, if you so choose, and weren't exhausted after those things. One thing that I will add to this, and I feel bad about the meeting schedule on this, and we do know that you're calling, we're calling you in for a couple of Saturday work sessions, I will probably also be suggesting a schedule to you all for post-budget work sessions to, to force the issue of discussion on the budget. I apologize in advance. With that-
Wait a minute, before you, before you vanish here, what's, what's the past precedent in terms of how council have done this? Have they gone to work sessions for the shortlist interview? Because I've now been involved in the interview and the quality base, you guys have done that at the staff level before, so is that normally a work session, Mr. Fearborn, or?
I think that, that during the last process, it, and they did go out, I would, I'm going to go out on a limb here, because I also was not here, the, the entire process took just shy of eighteen months. So I'm going to assume they scheduled it around regular meetings throughout, including, of course, on the back end, once you pick the firm, usually takes the firm about a month and a half to put a profile together for something like this, and then they get the profile out, it's, we're gonna be going into the holidays at that point, so I'm pretty sure that a search firm would probably suggest an extended period of time for the posting for the position, because they wanna give people ample time to get through with their holiday items and then get in here, then there's the interview, or, then the firm you choose will probably ask that they do the initial cut, and get it down to five or six candidates that you all would then interview. That's a couple of month process right there. One of my, one of the, the directors suggested that I would be acting city manager until my retirement, when someone was picked.
The next- They like it that way, right? I was saying, I don't think there's, I would not expect the council to be able to come up with anything by next Monday night, so we're looking at a closed session or a work session, a closed session at the next council meeting date, which is September-
The eleventh is the next, I mean, next Monday night is the eleventh, which would, I don't necessarily know if, picking the firm could be considered, I'm a little bit uncomfortable here, picking the firm could be considered an open session item, Joe.
It could be, could be, I've thought about it.
It is negotiation, but it could be considered an open session.
The work session is probably the safest, but I'm sensitive to the amount of demand you're putting in these people's times already in August, is what I'm thinking about, if you could have a mutiny here between all your budget and all these other things. City head, city attorney could roll in that deal, so I don't wanna get-
We have five packets to review, is that right?
That's correct, sir.
And, I, next Monday's gonna be way too early, I think, for everybody having reviewed those packets. I would propose that we, that we come back on the twenty-fifth, which is the next council meeting. And by then, we'll know whether or not this, is it something that we can do in closed session because it's gonna involve the contract, or is it something that we must do in open session because it's the right thing to do?
And what about the fact it's personnel? I think that's what it is. I think we should go under personnel, and I think we should go into closed session.
Yeah, and, and see, I, my background is not a legal profession, there's this fellow sitting to my right that could probably answer that if we gave him some time. Councilmember Morehead?
I'm gonna go and posit that this is not a personnel discussion, because this is a hiring firm, this is no different than the company that we wanted to do, the Hawker Ridge Park Master Plan or any, or the community center. Now, the, the nature and the variables that they will take into consideration, these are all public things that the public would want to know and hear us talk about as far as the variables we want to see in a generic city manager, but we're not talking about specific contract elements, we're not talking about dollar amounts negotiated. So I think in this, this realm, I think it is open, should be open, and I think that'd be fair.
And we do have a proposed grading sheet or something, I, I looked at it, it looks fine to me, I mean, I can sit down with a packet and, and, you know, score the, each of the five proposals. Yes?
And if I, if I could dovetail-
Hold on, I've, I've given the floor to somebody else.
If I could dovetail onto that, sir, your comfort level may be associated more with doing, doing this in a work session format rather than a regular meeting, because it's not, until you get to the point where you're actually doing readings, it is not really an action item. It's kind of a consensus of the council, here's who we'd like to bring in and interview, it's a consensus of the council then, how you wanna shortlist them and call them in, it's consensus of the council on whether you want Joe to go into negotiations with them or have him appear in front of all of you.
I think those questions would be more of a work session, than a normal council meeting, or a closed session, but I think work session would be-
Councilmember Huback, you want the floor? Okay. Then our next work session is on the eighteenth, that's two weeks from now, Councilmember-
Mr. Mayor, I'd actually like to go ahead and move into executive session to discuss personnel matters.
Let's, let's finish up this topic first.
It's pertaining to this topic, sir.
Once we're done. How does everybody feel about the eighteenth? Yes, we're okay with the eighteenth? Okay. That's two weeks from now, I will not be here.
Yes, sir, and I can guarantee neither will I for this particular portion, but, but we can put this item on the back end of several work sessions, and then as you move through with the step, we could schedule the next step.
Okay. So on the eighteenth, we'll come in with our evaluations. Okay. Joe, is there anything you need to add at this point?
or contact me ahead before then.
All right, that takes care of this item. There has been a motion to go into executive session, I am assuming there's personnel-
For personnel matters is authorized by six one oh dot oh two one subsection three.
All right, there is a motion to go into executive session for personnel matters, as authorized by six ten dot oh two ones three. Is there a second? So motion and a second, we need a roll call vote.
Councilmember Morehead? Yes. Councilmember Abdell Gwad?
Yes.
Councilmember Huback? Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Westcoat?
Yes.
Councilmember Boehner?
Yes.
Unanimous, sir.
All right, we're retiring to executive session, we'll return just to dismiss the- No, we, do we, I'm gonna adjourn the work session.